Good evening and welcome to the Select Board and Wage and Personnel Board for Tuesday, April 15, 2025 at 5:45 PM at the Lakeville Public Library. Is anyone besides LakeCam recording this meeting? Thank you. I'd like to open our meeting. Call to order. You want to announce yourselves just for the record? We'll call the order.
Paul.
Brian.
Maureen Candita.
Christopher Blanca.
And does the Finance Committee just want to announce themselves for the record as well?
Yeah, I'll call the Lakeville Finance Committee meeting to order on April 15 at 5:46 PM. Rule call.
Larry Costin.
Mike Redd.
Darren Beals.
Thank you. Next order of business is we're going to skip the Pledge of Allegiance because we can't see a flag in this room. So anyone that's waiting for it, I apologize. We are working on the FY26 Department Head Budget Meetings. First, we have Accounting.
Is it possible to go out of order with IT first?
Absolutely. Let's go to IT.
Madam Chair, page?
Oh.
I'm looking at here's the.
Do we have a page?
I find a town accountant. Oh, you announced page. Wait.
The General Government tab, page 28.
Oh, it does? 28.
You still in preparation over there? Thank you. 28?
Okay, can you introduce yourself and just walk us through your budget?
Good morning. Good evening, Bob McValley, Information Technology Director, outsourced for the town of Lakeville. For our 2026 fiscal budget, there was one little minor thing on the first page. It actually shows an increase of 22%. That is actually a typing mistake. It's actually going to be a decrease of 1.13%.
Even better.
So hopefully I've made everyone's night. On the next page, it actually is correct where it shows the breakdown. We've been able to pretty much pull the expenses, cutting back on some things that we don't necessarily have to do this year. There were some increases that we have to take care of for contracts. The contract with Green River has a 3% built-in increase for this year. Sort of maintenance agreements are going up, licensing is going up, so we have to plan to absorb those costs. But we were pretty much able to offset everything by cutting back on some expenses in other areas. One of the things I had looked at doing was we have to replace all of the computers that will not run Windows 11 by October 14. There are a number that will not upgrade to 11, but Microsoft is offering a relatively inexpensive solution where you can buy extended maintenance for one year on Windows 10. So we've exercised the option to do that on those devices. So instead of having to spend $15,000 on hardware, we can spend $700 on some license upgrades to get us through another year and then reevaluate whether we can continue with those for another year or we can get those replacements into the next fiscal year. So basically, it's pretty much level funded and I had some just minor reductions to make a little bit of a contribution.
We have a question.
Yep.
Bob, appreciate the effort to keep the costs down. The assets that, the endpoints that don't support Windows 11, is Windows 10 EOL, end of life?
End of life, October 25.
Right, so are they, remember, maybe are they providing, are they patching it or are they going to cease patching any vulnerabilities?
That's the benefit of getting extended.
Oh, okay.
The extended support will provide patching for Windows 10 for one year, starting in November of 2025.
Okay, if any reported vulnerabilities, I'll continue that.
Yep, so all the security patches will come out. We just, as opposed to getting it, we have to pay for it.
I believe that doesn't include zero day though issues though. It's not kind of one of the issues with staying with Windows 10?
Well, I mean, you get your typical OS security updates and then other things. Silents and Huntress are there and then anything else that would come through.
Right, but there are some risks though, staying obviously with Windows.
Well, you never want to be in an end-of-life problem out of what it is, but yeah.
So the proposal is we kick it out another year?
Yeah, and most of these actually are laptops that really aren't used that much.
Oh, okay.
So I think any of the devices that are desktops that are in use pretty much every day in town will take Windows 10. I've upgraded a number of them, but wouldn't, wouldn't take Windows 11 at that point, so. And I do have five spares, so if I come across something that I need to push out, I can throw away something out there. But a lot of these from a really used perspective, it really doesn't matter that much.
Okay, great, thank you.
Steph, do you want to tell us a little bit of some of the things that you've accomplished this year? I know you, looking at the DPW building, and I know that was kind of last year, kind of this year, but I don't think anyone spoke to it. So I'd love to just hear a little bit about some of the things that we've upgraded in town. Anything that's not a security risk, please feel free to talk about.
All right. The new TBW Administrative Building was completed and we have actually a small server room in that building. We've moved in there. The plan is once everything is fully implemented to actually make that a full DR site. So I have redundant Nutanix systems right now sitting at the police station that are mirroring each other. The next step is just to move the disaster recovery one out of the police station and into the Highway Department. And then we're going to be setting up, working with TMLP on setting up redundant internet connection there also. So right now, our internet comes into Town Hall. I'm in the process of moving that to the police station. It's a better infrastructure there for that. And I'm adding backup using Fios as a backup internet connection. So if we lose our primary TMLP, we'll still be able to keep things running. Then as a second level of redundancy, I'm going to have another internet connection with TMLP and Fios at the Highway Department with another set of firewalls. So if something happens to the physical building at the police station that we can't provide that service, we can run everything out of the, out of the Highway Department and including all of the, the STIME servers on the Nutanix cluster.
That's exciting, especially having your own space. For those of you who don't know, Bob was kind of floating into whatever spaces he could find a seat into for a couple of years and then we didn't really actually have a space before. It was kind of, yeah, just floating forever, so having a dedicated space.
It is kind of nice, although now people know kind of where to find me, so.
Yeah.
I don't know if that's good or bad. One of the other major projects we did was for the police department, which we actually just applied with last month, a complete upgrade of their CAD RMS system for dispatch and records management. So that is totally a state-of-the-art system now that's been up and running, ironing a couple of little bugs out of it, but it's, it's pretty much running very successfully and I think everyone's happy with it. The nice thing is that we have some legacy servers out there, which, some old Windows 2012 servers, which I had to keep running to support the old system and I can start shutting those down hopefully in the next couple of weeks. Anything that we did, indeed I have, have been able to shut down so far. We do have one old server that's running a legacy application for the assessors. I looked into, with the vendor, to see if we could migrate that data to a newer server and they basically said, no, that's not possible. So I have that server. It's a virtual machine that's powered off. They only access it half a dozen times a year, so when the, if there's a requirement for it, the assessors just open up a ticket with me or call me and I power it on, they do what they need to do and then we just shut it back down again. So that's not sitting out on the network. We should have, once we get those last couple of servers shut down, there'll be no legacy servers out there. Everything will be 2019, 2022.
Exciting. Remember Day? I can see the hand.
Oh, thanks. First of all, Bob, thank you very much for all that you and your company do and you've brought us just miles ahead of where we were a few years ago, so thank you for that. I know we still have a couple of months left in this fiscal year, but are you going to acquire everything you need infrastructure-wise for the new Clear Pond connection soon or is that going to be included in this budget for next fiscal year?
It really is. I mean, there's basically a computer that's new there, TMLP, the firewall is all part of the brand. TMLP is putting a switch out there, so we don't need a separate switch. We're just going to have one computer in that building. It's providing the computer and I have talked to Parks about budgeting them for a PC and then they wanted a printer there potentially, so that.
Printer.
Yeah, so they, they will, they know that that's, that's there. Although, one of the main thrusts for that was they were talking about just having a computer and being able to print some spreadsheets and then send the spreadsheets to someone to get keyed in and with them on the town network now, they really don't have to do that because they'll be on the same network as the, the Parks building, so the printer may be not really a requirement now that that's all in.
Needs to be a process analysis there.
A follow-up question based on something I didn't hear. Are we going to be extending the public Wi-Fi there?
Right now, the public Wi-Fi is not going to go there. That could be done. We could add an access point there, but the Parks Department's opinion was it's kind of a recreation facility. They didn't really kind of want people coming there and sitting on the beach, sitting on their phones, looking at their phones, but the idea was to have some family time. But the infrastructure is there if we want to do it.
Feels like a decision that would not be decided by individual committees.
Yeah, probably not. Additional to that, remember Day? We were hoping for some less cash-heavy payment options there and I'm not sure how that kind of goes if we went to some type of system where we were scanning or paying and no one had signal to actually scan or pay.
Yeah, I know the, the Harvard Department, the transfer station is putting something in now and that will run either wired or wireless, so there's an option to run either way there. If it's going to be in the snack shack, then we probably want to throw wireless in there because the, all the hardware is going to be in the Parks building itself.
Yeah, if no one can use it on their phone, it kind of defeats a little bit of the purpose.
Yeah, actually, the phones don't need to connect. It's the.
It's kind of a dead zone though, isn't it?
It's the terminals, the terminal that would, would take the credit card payments that needs to connect to the internet.
Or unless you do an Apple Cash or something like that.
Yeah, like an Apple Pay.
Yeah, Apple Pay.
Yeah, that's.
How modern do we want to be?
Oh, sorry.
We're just saying. We don't want to constrain ourselves. We're big time now. We have Wi-Fi.
An access point isn't, isn't all that. Cost expensive to throw an access point in there.
Okay. Anything else you'd like us to know?
Yeah, I guess the other thing is I, there is some more, we did a cyber audit and we had some, some good results from that. I am adding some extra reporting. We are logging everything basically, but we're going to be adding some software this year to get some more higher visibility reports and where it's off the system that we don't necessarily have to go digging for today, will just appear.
Fantastic. Any questions from anyone?
Oh, Madam Chair, one more question, one more question, Bob. On Saturday, so the, the internet is being provided by TMLP.
Correct.
You're working on a redundant capability.
Yep.
Through Verizon?
Verizon Fios.
What's the, so today, if somebody cuts a cable or something, TMLP cable, and town loses the internet, you're basically.
We're dead in the water.
Deal until they were.
Until we, until that gets repaired.
No security.
Oh, I'll save that for the IT, so. Thank you. Anything, anybody?
Cool. Anything, anyone?
Yeah, just for everyone's awareness, so I didn't fund Bob's capital request this year. One of my first days on the job, I kind of asked for all the old capital items and we found that we have $109,000 in old capital accounts for IT. So those can be tapped into anytime.
Fantastic.
For any big kind of upgrades.
Old server?
It's just kind of like tech, just technology improvements at a town meeting, so it's pretty open, so.
Good, that's even better.
Yep.
Cool. All right, thank you very much. Thanks for talking to us today. Next up, Accounting, please.
Yeah, can we do debt?
Come on guys, let's break this to the way.
Like, some people can, are going to be here longer, I don't want to keep anyone.
That's fine, let's go for debt.
So debt has its own tab. Also, page 79. So total FY26 town debt is $1,248,062. It's down $93,761 from the prior year. Of that debt, $805,000 is excluded debt, which means it's raised directly on the tax rate and the other $443,620 is operating debt, so we, you know, fund that within the limit. There is also one other small piece that comes over by way of the Free Lake School Assessment, $135,480, which you can see on your Financing Sources and Uses in the Budget Summary tab. That comes over with the assessment from Free Lake. It's built into that. That's also raised, excluded debt, so that's raised on the recap as well. We've added no new debt. We're still kind of temporarily borrowing for Route 79 and we permanently borrowed for the police station. And that's kind of where we stand, very minimal. As we discussed before the meeting, we had the asset arms at windows and doors finalized, but we're going to wait on that until MSBA gives us their final approval and then we can permanently, permanently borrow that as well. But very minimal debt, mostly raised on the recap, so.
Does anyone have any questions?
I'd just like to point out, we've got at least two things that appear to be coming off the rolls this year. Looks like when ambulance was paid off and some of the police station construction costs.
Yeah, the police station construction cost was, it was exempt debt, so it was short-term borrowed. Typically on a project like that, you would borrow in short-term increments until you're ready to permanently borrow when the project's complete. So you're correct, we kind of paid off those short-term bands for the construction. Ambulance is paid off and the library was paid off, I believe, in fiscal '24, so.
Just for like reference, we're going to be borrowing obviously for the fire station when the time comes and then one potential is Old Colony, Regional Votech if the bill passes.
You know, one quick comment would be even though this is a significant list of accounts, there's not a lot left, to be honest.
No, no, we're.
There's a lot of zeros here.
We're doing pretty well, yeah, so. That's always a funny thing, you don't want to have no debt because then it gets gobbled up in the budget and then when it comes time to borrow again, it's like a sticker shop, so it's good to have some, but I think we're doing quite well for a town our side.
Do you know what our latest debt ratio is?
I don't have that tonight.
Oh, sorry.
I don't know. Erica, you don't have that? No.
When is the police station, when is the police station fully paid? How many more years do we know?
Was it 15 or 20 years?
I didn't bring the long-term debt schedule with me, but I believe it was 20 years.
Borrowed 2019, and it was 20 years.
I believe it was 20 years.
2039.
We have to wait.
Yeah, we, we got a little bit.
Yeah.
Time. And then the Route 79 project, we haven't fully borrowed for.
We're still doing temporary borrow.
Which is temporary bonds, which is the total amount that we were allowed at town meeting was 2.3 million and that's for land taking and easements and et cetera, et cetera. None of the roadway or, or sidewalk, the road layout construction.
With the fire station, have we started to look into that in like 20, is that a 20-year loan or 30? Have we even started to think about that?
We haven't. It's either going to be 20 or 25 years depending on, I guess, what the interest rate we get from the bank.
How, how much lead time do you need for that?
I think it's, it just depends on where, where we are in the, in the process. We'd probably have to sit with our financial advisors and utilize their expertise to see how long we should go and when we should start planning. But we're, we're going to do short-term borrowings, that's similar to a construction loan as we start to build, because you wouldn't permanently borrow until the end, so kind of to be determined.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Any further questions? On debt? Okay. Moving on to.
Treasurer Collector.
Yeah. Oh, Treasurer Collector.
Page 23.
Thanks for joining us. All right. Why don't you introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about your budget?
Okay, so my name's Erica Correa. I'm the Treasurer Collector for the town of Lakeville. As you can see on page 23, the salaries portion did go up and those are contractual obligations. Moving down to the line item expenses, the two big jumps, well, relatively big jumps. Tax title went up 2,000 and the postage. So tax title, I'm just trying to clean up since I've been here, so it's, it's a slow go. You only have so much money in a year, so you can only do so many parcels at a time and it takes a long time for them to get through the court process. So I have just been, you know, chipping away at that. The other big item was the postage and that's because we're going to consolidate it and put the whole town under my, my postage budget. Other than that, you know, a couple of things went down. Nothing too, too crazy.
Anyone have any questions related to?
Madam Chair?
Absolutely.
Erica, so the, there's a little bit explanation behind the tax title foreclosure, so that's fees associated with you processing all those.
Yes.
Properties that are delinquent on taxes.
Exactly. A lot of the fees we have to front and then once we determine what we want to do with those parcels, eventually we can, if say we go to auction or whatever, we can put that back on. It's just not, it's not instantaneous.
Understand, and so now you're trying, you're working through a backlog, so you're trying to. But have we recently recouped any of those fees through auctions? When's the last time we auctioned off foreclosed property? I know we're sitting on some.
That is a while.
In a long time.
We haven't done any since I've been here. We're actually talking about having a fun auction soon.
Yeah, we have two parcels that are going to be bringing to the Select Board, probably in the next month or two, just waiting on a final few things.
Yeah, so give some context I can give you.
Okay, good.
So back in 2018 and 2019, it was the first time in 10 years that anyone had touched them and then it takes about five years to go through the land court process, so that's where we are now. So it's just starting to get to the point where it's freed up for her to possibly take action on.
Like you said, it takes a while. It's even more backlogged since COVID from what they tell me, just because of nothing could have happened during that time.
But yes, there was a 10-year period between 2009 and 2019 where no tax titles.
So Madam Chair, do we have any idea what the potential revenue loss is for that?
We have to look at the value of, of the properties and the remainder value of what it is.
And my understanding is, did we talk about this last night? My understanding is that we have to return the value, right to the.
It's the, it's the borrowed amount or the delinquent amount plus 14% per year.
Oh.
Is that what it still is? Was it still 14%?
It was 16, now it's 8%.
Yeah, they've changed that.
So does that mean everything was still retroactive on the 16 or does it?
No, so it changes, yes. So the new ones that go into tax title, those will be new at the 8%, but as soon as that clock struck 11, so November 1st, 2024, that 16% became 8%, unfortunately.
I believe one of the properties is prior to the cutoff date.
Correct.
I'll be shooting from the hip here, but like 300,000, I think was the assessed value of that one.
I think that one was 300, if I'm not mistaken.
So we could have cooped 300 for that and.
And it goes into the general fund.
Yeah, correct.
So it doesn't like go back in. It's not like a revolving.
And I'd say too, that give Erica's department credit. I mean, she's really, since she's come on, she's really stayed on top of this. So the other benefit is people who are delinquent, either themselves or their family, because sometimes it's the senior that gets behind, the kids don't even know it, they're getting awareness much sooner and getting on payment plans and getting up to date so that they don't like build up so much that they were the town, but now the house is upside down.
Yeah. Clarity is kindness, you know, in those type of scenarios.
And on that, we actually had about three to four payoffs this year.
Oh, nice.
So since I started, I'm big into payment plans, like just come and talk to me, we can work something out. No money coming into the town is better, some, excuse me, some money coming into the town is better than no money. So, and, and I tell people, if you fall on tough times, even like missing one payment, just call me, I'm very understanding. Tell me what's happening and we can move forward.
I appreciate you reaching out and being so kind to our residents, especially the ones that are experiencing, you know.
They deserve it.
Problems going on.
Yeah.
More questions?
How many, how many potential titles are in foreclosure or potentially foreclosure in town?
So overall or just this current?
Overall.
There are, there's hundreds.
Hundreds.
Yeah, there are.
Varying degrees though, right?
Yeah, some of them are, I mean, some of them are.
One month, yeah.
Better than others, more desirable than others. Some of them are, from what I understand, like part of wetlands and so I don't think those are going to be very desirable to people, but there's different varieties of.
So people, because it's wetlands, they can't do anything, they don't know what's going to buy it, they don't care, they just stop paying the taxes.
Yeah, and there's also a bunch of retention ponds in there. So just in case anyone's wondering, back in the day, they used to portion off the retention pond as a parcel and then just not pay taxes on it.
Right.
So, I don't know, there's not a lot of value for the town.
I thought you were going to add.
Yeah. There's always a way around. Any questions? I believe your Assistant Treasurer Collector just had a great announcement on a professional goal.
She did. She passed the exam, the collector exam. Very proud of her.
Nice.
Yeah, so that's excellent. Two highly qualified individuals in that office make a seamless transition for vacations.
My office is amazing. Yes, I'm very fortunate.
I'm glad you're enjoying yourself. We're enjoying having you.
Thank you.
All right, if that's it.
I had a general question that came up during the cemetery session about trusts and I think that was, said that this was on the Treasury Department about the trusts and what trusts are out there and what kind of trusts.
So we do have, I want to say roughly a dozen, if I'm not mistaken, trust accounts to varying degrees. And when, what did, when did this come up again?
About using one of the trusts to repair the wall that was damaged, the retaining wall that was damaged. Doing perpetual trust. Perpetual care.
So my office does not, I, I personally would want to look at the trust documents. My office does not have those. I've come through everything since I have been in that office, kind of put everything together and I have not found any trust documents, but I'd be curious to see how it was set up and like what, and not just that one, for any of them.
Right.
What it says in there as to how we can use it.
And I think the point was, is it in an interest-bearing account or is it in non-interest-bearing accounts?
It's absolutely in an interest-bearing.
And are we, you know, are we maximizing our dollar values in any, for any of the trusts?
Yes, and actually, I'm glad that you brought that up because I have been kind of looking around. Right now, the bank's interest rates are, they're not as desirable as they were, say, a year ago, but I feel like I can find better. So I have been looking into that.
Does anyone know, you're on a subscription, someone must know where they are.
I would certainly hope so.
I mean, it's great that it's earning interest, but it'd be great if you could also use it for what it was meant for as well.
Correct. So I would, I'd like to think that the department should have those trust documents as well, but I do know that, you know, turnover happens, so I don't know, want to see what they would be.
So they used to be up in Todd's office and then in 2019, we did a documents retention thing and a lot of documents went downstairs into the vault.
Okay.
So the best person to find those is usually Lil or Lola, who did our, all of our document retention, kept very detailed document retention sheets, so going through those would probably be your best bet at trying to run it down.
These have to be the most obscure documents in town history.
Well, they're, they're for very small amounts, most of them, like.
We were talking about it for a lot of years though, when we ever produced these things, I'm just curious.
Yeah, we had one that was for like three hundred dollars and it's for flowers for the, for the islands.
That's gift account, that's separate.
Oh, that was the gift account.
It was a gift account, it was a different thing, these trusts that, no one's ever been able to.
The Maxim Trust.
Put on these, find these trusts, it's always been my, one of our, one of our questions anyhow, back to, I don't know, my first go on him. It was one of the first, I didn't even know you had trusts when I first came on the call. And we've never seen them, I don't, we guess I checked the trunks of cars, I guess, or something, I don't know.
So, Madam Chair, may I make a request on behalf of the Select Board and the Finance Committee? If we could identify those documents and amounts, please?
Um, do we have any days?
Question though, like how far do we wanna go? Because this might require Town Council to review the, the trust documents themselves to make a determination on who is authorized to say yes, it can be.
We'd probably just like to see it first.
We're applying it, great, but you know, as we go further, you're probably gonna figure out like, okay, is there a surviving trustee on these things that is it, do we get to make the determination?
See what the value is, right, if it's pennies.
Yeah, we can add it to that, um, gifts account list from last year we'd never seen before.
Always nice to be surprised.
Like what else is out there?
Um, so timeframe, thirty days, I mean, is that, is that acceptable?
I can run a list of balances at Munis, that's not a problem, it's just a matter of what they're expendable, not expendable. Finding, like the devil's in the details on these trust funds, because some of them you can only spend the interest, some of them, you know, so it just depends on how they were written up, so.
Whatever you can do would be appreciated.
On the ones where you can only spend the interest, like what eventually happens to that principal, like what? Where's the principal go?
It's like a perpetual interest, perpetual interest-bearing trust, and I believe.
To my knowledge, it just keeps going.
Unless there's still existing heirs that could oversee or, you know, edit the trust, but.
Yeah, because they don't usually put a. They don't usually put a sunset date on a trust.
No, no, so, no.
I guess we should just understand them, what we have and where it is and.
We might not get everything, we might just get what we have.
Right.
Um, and that might be, you know, and we might, they'll structure, obviously. If it is interest-bearing, that would be in your, you know, the interest spend versus just the straight.
Straight, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, expendable trust, I guess you would say. I can also send an email to Department of Local Services or our auditors and just pick their brain about what other municipalities are doing, because this is a common problem, people have these trusts sitting around for decades on their ledger and the documents have been destroyed or misplaced or what have you, so maybe there's a way to, you know, under a certain threshold, you can transfer it in and use it into a special revenue fund or put it into general fund miscellaneous revenue. I know they do that with old grants now, like a lot of old grants that are non-existent, that didn't get spent down, can be transferred into general fund miscellaneous revenue, so, you know, I'll look into seeing if they can follow the same practice for trust funds.
I don't wanna get us into a situation where we spend like, you know, seven hundred dollars in Town Council time to get six hundred dollars from a trust fund, so.
I agree, yeah, I would.
I'm sure things like that happen a lot too.
And I will say, that's probably what you're gonna find, I mean, my previous town had dozens of trust funds and grand total was like thirty-six thousand dollars. It, it's, they are what they are, you know, so.
All right.
Will intention, original.
Yes, maybe we ask for sunset dates when we, we gladly accept it, when, when does this expire? Um, anything else anyone would like to ask? No, thank you very much, thank you. Have a great night.
Madam Chair, if you might take a two-minute break, just for, uh.
Two-minute break.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you for the brief break. Uh, next is accounting.
So, um, some of the big changes, obviously, we had a ten ninety-nine consultant, Todd, um, as Town Accountant for the last nine years, he was paid in the expense cluster, um, not through payroll. So you see the no salary for several years and then the, for FY twenty-six. Um, it's also my accounting specialist and her longevity that round out our total salaries. Financial services line, significant decrease of almost a hundred percent, that's where Mr. Hassett was charged. And obviously, we've kinda swapped that up to the salary line. Two, uh, changes there, training is now housed under Human Resource. And I moved my twenty dollars of postage to, uh, the consolidated postage line in the Treasurer's budget. Um, and I tried to shave where I could based off prior year actuals, office supplies, um, some dues and subscriptions, things of that, that nature, but, uh, my budget obviously is predominantly salaries, so. Nothing, uh, significant under the expense lines, so.
Any questions, pretty self-explanatory, it's very small, budget-wise.
One quick question if I may, is, um, does like, is Munis something that we have to subscribe to or is that?
It is, it's actually housed in the IT budget, in the contractual, uh, contractual services line, you can pay the subscription out of there, thank you.
Yes, because technically Munis could cover purchase orders and other stuff at some point.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So the financial services lineup, that was, Todd was paid out of that previously, right?
That's correct.
What's the seven fifty record, about before?
So, um, two things, one, we started to outsource our annual ten ninety-nines because they were becoming, uh, very complicated through Munis, you had to order special paper, the formatting. And also the online IRS reporting for annual ten ninety-nines has become very intrusive. They want someone's social security number, mine as Town Accountant, they want a copy of my driver's license, actually want a selfie. It, it's called IDV, it's like very, very intrusive now to upload our ten ninety-nine file. And for six hundred dollars, Harper's, our payroll services, has a ten ninety-nine division, they will do the entire process, file, everything. Which is, uh, a really good deal, to be honest with you, I think we sent out almost a hundred ten ninety-nines, so. Um, so, you know, for the sake of personal security, six hundred dollars is nothing. And then, um, the other one fifty, um, Munis requires what's called a system close. And, you know, they kinda hit you with like a hundred, hundred and fifty dollar charge, it takes about twenty minutes. It's like a full system rollover on June thirtieth to seventh one. I came from a more archaic software where you could do that internally. Um, so I put a hundred and fifty dollars there just in case, I need to have that done this June thirtieth, but, um, I have enough colleagues in the field that use Munis, I'm kinda hoping to piggyback off theirs and see if I can just do that in-house and, and not have to pay that hundred and fifty dollars, so.
Question for you regarding Munis, that's the only updates they're doing is like a yearly close? Or are they forcing version updates on us anytime?
The system close is not an update, it's, it's literally taking your fiscal twenty-five and kinda rolling and rolling everything over. Um, and it, it requires like a system backup. And the gentleman actually does, he used to work for Munis, he doesn't anymore, he does it consulting. And he does it in fifteen minutes and his fee's a hundred and fifty dollars, he was a friend of Todd's, so I kinda left it in there. Um, but I've used him. Yeah, I've used him in the past and it's, it's kind of a heavy lift and he's, he's so familiar with the software that he can do it in, in no time, like I said, so it's. But I'm, I'm hoping to piggyback off of it, because I'd rather do that internally, um, so, that's pretty much it.
Very good. Any questions, I have a couple, just wanted to throw them out there. Now, we actually have a full-time accountant again after, is it nine years, is it nine years?
Yes, nine years.
Nine years.
Yeah.
Um, I, I love the capacity, I love having someone there every day, lots of questions to be answered. Can you tell us a little bit of some of the things you've kinda taken on, which, um, which obviously got attention, but maybe you're given a little bit more love now that you, you're able to be there?
Yeah, well, I think, I mean, my role is pretty defined by Master and Allah, obviously, but I never used Munis before, so Munis is new to me. So even though I've only been here five months, I'm really trying to, you know, take every note I can and use the software, learn that. Um, I think what's great about being in a smaller town is Andrew's kinda pulled me in on a lot of stuff. Quasi-finance and not just typically, like previously, it was just accounting, eight hours a day, forty hours a week. Now I'm kind of in on some infrastructure projects and things like that. Um, which is good, because everything really relates to finance, one way or another, so. So just kinda being part of the team, kinda helping Andrew out. We've both been here four months and five months respectively, so we've kinda grown into our roles together, so. Yeah, and my hope is to keep free cash certification and tax rate recap on course, just like Todd did. Um, I was always really early with free cash certification for the last twelve years and just kinda continue that, uh, that method, so.
I think we appreciate having, um, someone for the new town administrator to work with so closely because we are more project-heavy at this juncture than I can recall in my lifetime, uh, for the town of Lakeville.
Yeah, and like I said, everything, you know, comes down to budgets and finance and stuff, so it's nice to kinda be on the ground floor of some of these projects, so I appreciate it.
I think we're gonna have a big, um, kinda change with policies going forward. Um, we both don't really care for like the budget as it is, like the documents, I think we're gonna really kinda overhaul it to a different degree next year, I know, um, the accomplishments keeps coming up. Um, we're trying to do like a strategic plan in the future and then incorporate that into this. Um, you're gonna see, I guess, more detail, like we're gonna talk about it later with the capital plan, it's like twenty pages.
You mean like the whys behind?
Yeah, so I think this is gonna be more advanced next year. Um, I think we're gonna see recording kinda on like a, Mike's not gonna like it, but like a five-year, uh, outlook on stuff, ten-year outlook's more like just forecasting, um, a lot of the, I'd rather be proactive on a lot of these things than reactive and I think the capacity is here more to, to change that.
Yeah, as long as it's transparent what's going to where and we, we know like ahead of time, we can all understand. You know, if it doesn't just pop up in one line and we're like, hmm, what's going on? I'm totally open to all new budget. Um, you enhance every few years and if you don't, like you're not, you're not thinking about, you know, what the public is looking for. And the people, they will always want more information, but synthesized down into a way that distills it down so they can understand, you know, quickly what it is that they're looking to, uh, looking to see for financial impact. And you hit the nail on the head about like the accomplishments and what's going on in the departments. Um, when DPW Director set all the roads that he was planning, I was absolutely floored. I had only known maybe a fraction of what was on that list, um, because it had floated around as, as a communication. But we do a lot here and we just don't, we don't do a really good job of publicizing all the things we do. And we should really let the people know how we're not using budget money to do things, we're using grants and we're using ARPA funds and we're, you know, we're, we're pulling things in from wherever we can. So I'd love to see anything that furthers that type of narrative or that educational component.
Yeah, you're gonna see a lot of goals, objectives, accomplishments next year. And obviously, coming in four months, five months, we're like worried about all sorts of stuff and we kinda like, even the budget kinds are always over afterthought in some degrees, just trying to learn the whole job. And, uh, this is like a really labor-intensive kinda process that we had to do and kinda overhauled a lot of it with the presentation and the capital plan, and so, like, there might be some errors here and there and we're basically like strapping this thing together with like a week or two.
I wrote them all down now.
I know, so Mike, Mike and myself are like obsessed with looking at these, so they're fixed on the backend, so, um, yeah, it's just.
No, I appreciate all the effort that goes into it, I, I do know the effort that goes into it. And I do know, actually, you know, being short-staffed and all of those things, how much extra effort goes into it. So I really am appreciative of you guys compiling all of this and, and controlling, you know, the, the spending for us to try to help us out of this, uh, situation that we're gonna be in.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Um, can I make your recommendation for next year? When you're doing, uh, when we're looking at the current year, we have revised, right, twenty twenty-five revised. Is there any way you can get year-to-date actual? Because a lot of times, we're looking at numbers that were projected a year ago and it's, it's tough to tell. It says twenty-five thousand, but is that a good number, like it says twenty-five thousand next year, right? If we're only spent twelve thousand this year, you know what I mean?
Do you mean, like what we've expended so far?
Yeah, so like, you're, you're showing us for twenty twenty-five what the budget was, but I don't, I'm just throwing out a number, like, I don't know if that seventeen, that's one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars for office and supplies is right. Like maybe you've only charged three hundred dollars this year, if that's the case, then why are we budgeting eleven, you know what I mean, just?
Yeah, I mean, I think the reason for putting the revised in for twenty twenty-five is that shows the most up-to-date budget that was voted at the Fall Town Meeting in November, because the year's not through. I could say we only spent three hundred out of that now, but we may spend the other fourteen hundred from today through June thirtieth, because we're in that fiscal year.
Understood, but I just think having actuals up to a certain point would be helpful.
Okay.
Darren, are you getting?
I, I have gotten that, but in this, I guess in just this specific presentation, it would be helpful, just my opinion.
Quick comment if I may, um, just for accounting in general, I mean, you gentlemen have been on for a short amount of time. And like I say, like, not only did you come to, you know, a new town, but also to be in the situation you are, trying to figure out how to make this budget work. Um, really been moving mountains and appreciate you guys taking like two hours of your time to, you know, bring me up to speed last week. I know you made the offer, all the Select Board members definitely take him up on that if you can. Um, just kinda seeing how, especially the two of these gentlemen kinda play off each other, ideas have been fantastic, I think they're making a great team right now. And, you know, Mike's a local guy, so he's got vested interest in the town doing well. And I think also, which has been nice, as we've gone through this, at least for me, is seeing that there's really no significant changes from the last few years, which tells me that, you know, our previous accounting services were doing pretty well. So, you know, it wasn't like Mike came in and said, oh, what's going on? So glad to see there's consistency, even though we've had a big change in the accounting services themselves.
Thank you, Ms. Warren. If there's no other questions? All right.
I say we start with Human Resources, yeah, then, then the fixed costs.
So Human Resources, uh, same tab, page twenty-six.
Hello.
Evening.
Good evening.
Lacey Marshall, AJR Director. Um, so the difference in the wages is just the part-time. Uh, all of the offices are fully staffed right now, there's two to three people in there. So thirty-five hundred, it's really in case the Select Board Office needs that part-time floater, they're really the only one that is gonna be short-staffed. Uh, and the way I look at it is if we need more money, then I'll ask at Fall Town Meeting.
Question for you, let's say right on, right off the bat.
Yeah.
Um, the hourly wage part-time, those went into, um, Lil's budget?
Yeah, so if you look at, uh, twenty twenty-four, I actually was budgeted at like forty-five thousand dollars. And then for twenty twenty-five, I was originally budgeted at thirty thousand dollars, but we had taken twenty-two thousand and turned it over to the town clerk for her part-time. Uh, because we had, you know, somebody out on FMLA in the summertime and everything else, I had asked for an increase in Fall Town Meeting, uh, for the twenty twenty-five, which brought us to the fourteen. But going into twenty twenty-six, like I said, everybody's full-staffed, um, you know, the assessors is gonna be a full-time and a part-time. Treasurer Collector has three, uh, Town Clerk has two, full-time and a part-time. So we're really, we're really healthy right now, so it's really the Select Board's Office that uses the floater. Uh, so I don't see us needing a really big budget for our floater right now.
Um, so that's another question is, you know, should we have the floater under, um, HR? Or should the floater be actually under the town clerk? Because she had, was it six thousand dollars?
It was a question that came up during the course.
Yeah, I think it was six thousand dollars under floater and I didn't know I was.
I did watch that and I think it might have just been an oversight, I think when they did the twenty-two thousand, that six thousand should have gone up and then out of the twenty-two, um, it should have been mine. But the floater is always in the HR, because they're not just dedicated to the town clerk. Um, you know, if somebody calls out at like the COA or two of them are out, there might be a person there. Or, uh, recently, you know, the assessor's assistant, uh, needed to leave early, so we had the floater there. So typically, the floater comes through me, but I, I mean, I, I can't speak for other offices, I don't know what her, her workload is. So if, you know, the board feels that she needs her own funding for it, I'm not against it.
Um, I'm not sure, but I know it was different than before and that was, you know, the reason we had said it. It was just exactly what you laid out.
Yeah.
Is that we didn't know where we would have the need and putting it in one department seemed like we would be unfairly punishing that department if they were needed somewhere else.
Yep.
And we kept pulling from their budget line and that's why the decision was made to put it under HR. Um, and then to, you know, go, you know, pay as you need basically and put, put this floater where they're needed. Um, I'd love to hear the thought behind moving it into a specific department.
Um, I think this works for what it is. I think it's for all departments except for town clerks, correct?
So when, when all of the money was in here and before the part-time floater, all of the floating money was in my budget. I'm not, I'm, again, I'm not a hundred percent sure if, you know, in years past, there was a floating budget in there and I just wasn't aware of it. Um, prior to the part timer, anytime that the town clerk needed a floater, it came and was paid out of my budget. So I'm not sure where that line item came from or what, um.
But now it's only got three thousand in it, right?
Yeah, so in.
Three thousand five hundred?
In the town clerk's budget, there's hourly wages temporary. I think that's, that's the, the floater for.
And that's six thousand dollars, correct?
It was six, we put it down to one.
We put it down to one.
Um, but this, this floater, I think, is fine for what it is.
I mean, uh, I think I'm kind of plus mourning what you said, Madam Chair, which is it, it just to me feels like the floater budget would be in HR and it would be for me and easy to understand light item that says hourly wage is floating or something. I see temporary and think like we're bringing somebody from the outside in. Uh, but do as you wish, but.
Yeah, we could put it all under one.
I mean, it seems like having it under one is easier accounting-wise unless Mike says otherwise. But then, you know, Lacey's department would keep track of what we use, five hours here and three hours here and then, okay.
Accountability.
And then figure out like, okay, we're seeing an extra draw towards this department and we need to do something staffed with them or.
Yeah, and then what happens when the person overshoots their budget? You know, does it come out of the town clerk? Do we, you know, do we have to do a transfer? Um, I just wanna make sure we've fully thought it through. And if, you know, if you guys think it's the best way, I will defer to it, but I, it's just not what I'm used to and it's not how I would have preferred to set it up.
Yeah, we can still talk about it internally, but I don't.
Yeah, I'd like to talk to the town clerk, kind of to see what her needs are.
Yeah.
Cause if it was a, if she has like a specific time or number.
Like it's cyclical property.
Yeah, kind of like if she knows she's gonna need that person, then I, I budget it into my knowing that, like there's at least a hold for her person. You know, so almost like the budget, the number would be under mine, but it would be specifically dedicated to her office. I wouldn't mind doing that, but I don't wanna take like a person or, you know, something that she needs and we're using it somewhere else and now, you know, there's no funding for her.
Comes out of her budget, yeah.
Yeah, so I, I mean, I'm willing to do that as long as we, you know, we have a, a number that's kind of set aside for her.
Makes sense.
Okay, uh, expenses, so payroll services. Uh, I actually, we just signed a contract with them. Um, they're at about ten thousand five hundred dollars. The additional cost is they actually do all of our W twos for us. Um, so that's where that little bit extra comes in. Contracted services went down by fifty percent. Thank you to the select board. That's due to, uh, so the contracted services is our Tristan Medical and so it's our drug testing. It's our physicals, um, any new person that comes in. So that's the contracted services and since we're only sending the ones that are, that require the physicals and the drug testing, we're able to decrease the budget by a significant amount. On the flip side, training and education are now all in my budget. Um, so that's a, a big jump right there. Postage went over to the treasurer collector. Printing, I don't know why that is in there, but, um, it's really absorbed into my office supplies. Advertising, I decreased. Um, I'm assuming it's gonna end up going potentially to zero once we start using that P card. But right now it's just for, uh, MMA to do the postings and then indeed, if we need to do it there. Um, and then dues and subscriptions, again, I looked at exactly what we have subscriptions to and I will work the budget down to what that amount is exactly.
Does anyone have any questions?
Straightforward.
Yeah. Is there anything you want to talk about going on in your department? I know you have a great newsletter going out, but I'd love to hear about.
Yeah, so super happy about the newsletter. All of the boards have been contributing and every month they feel like it just grows exponentially. And I'm kind of hoping that, um, people are getting it. Uh, I see that it's been passed over to like Lakeville Helping Lakeville, so I think the word is starting to get out and I, I think, um, I'm getting a lot of feedback from different people. Um, the admin assistant was actually selected and attended a MMA seminar. So it was a ten-week course where it was eight hours, uh, every week and they went through all the different, you know, they did union negotiations, they did FMLA, they did, yeah, they went through a, a whole, uh, thing, so that was great for him. Um, I completed the MCPBO, so I'm excited to kind of dig in a little bit into procurement. Um, and then really we've been just working on streamlining the employee handbook to make it an actual policy piece. So employee handbook, it looks like it's just for non-union people, but the policy would state whether it's non-union or non-union, union, and so it incorporates it all and it's a lot easier to update as like laws change. So I'm not gonna bring you, you know, a hundred and fifteen pages. I'll probably bring, you know, three policies at a time for your review and then we can start posting those on the website as well so that, you know, everybody has, uh, access to them.
Great. All good, everyone?
All right.
All right, thank you very much for coming in. Appreciate your time.
Appreciate it.
I'm still gonna be here for two more seconds for fixed costs. Sorry.
So fixed cost is page eighty-two, it has its own tab.
Larry, you need to get out of here.
Just that one time.
You sure you don't wanna step out for insurance?
Oh, no, I'll stay in for insurance.
Oh goodness, okay.
You're gonna beat that same drum, so just double it.
All right.
Okay.
Page eighty-six.
So Quimby County, the assessment, that's the number that we get from Quimby County. It's been.
Eighty-two.
A pretty substantial increase year over year, but the reason for that is their intent is that we're fully funded by twenty twenty-eight. Um, so my understanding is we could see a significant decrease at that point. Um, but right now we don't have any say in, in the cost that we pay. If we pay it on time, then we actually get a little bit of a break on it. If we were to pay it like in separate payments, we'd get an interest payment. So this is the payment that we give, uh, which gives us that little bit of a discount. Um, unemployment compensation, the reason that we increased the number is because we have had a little bit more of a turnover. And also if, um, we do in fact are not funding the four firefighters, then I needed to absorb that cost in case they were to apply for the workman's comp, so that's also in there. Moving down to I guess what everybody's favorite is, is the insurance. So the insurance this year, um, Gateway voted on a nine percent increase. It's still lower than most other groups. Um, and the reason that we did that is because in twenty twenty-seven fiscal year, uh, Lakeville will no longer be part of Gateway. Uh, we're going to dissolve, so right now I've been working with the IAC, I, yeah, IAC. Um, I've given them the seven different insurance groups that we could go with. Uh, they all have the paperwork to bring to their respected group, whether it's a union or non-union or retirees. And then we'll be meeting in a couple of months to make a decision and, and work with whoever those different groups are to see what the rate would be for, uh, twenty twenty-seven. So Medicare, town tax, um, it's calculated based off of the number of employees and then what their share would be, so that was only eight percent. The other ones are all at nine percent. Couple of differences in here, so when we were working with Blue Cross Blue Shield, the dental, it, we had an HMO with dental. We still have that plan, only now, it was a Blue Cross Blue Shield plan with the Blue Cross Blue Shield dental. Now it's a HPI plan with an Altes dental, so that's why you see a new line in there for dental and there's, um, the thirty thousand dollars in there. Health insurance rebates, that was, um, sorry, health reimbursement, HRA. So when we did that section thirty-two B change, remember we have to give twenty-five percent of our savings? So that number started at the sixty-one thousand, we're at forty-three thousand now. Once that number has reached its zero balance, we don't, we're not required to fund it anymore. So that will continue to just decrease, um, and as the, the, the number goes down, that'll be the number that's in there. Um, health insurance rebates, that's your opt-out right now. Um, wellness programs is our EAP and then other contractual is our HSA, our FSA. Um, that's those, that's the funding for those different programs.
Any comments, questions?
Uh, I have one if I may. Is, is there any, maybe we don't know, um, but is on the health insurance rebates, is there any reason why it seems that we are trending way higher than we were a couple of years ago? I mean, are our employees just saying, we don't like the plans we have, I'm gonna take my spouse's plan instead or?
So last year we had more vacancies than we do this year. Um, so as we're filling the vacancies, people are.
Taking the opt-outs.
Taking the opt-out if their, you know, spouse already has insurance. Um, and then I do always add in like two into each plan just because we still have vacancies within the town. So I always add in, um, so the highest plan that we have right now is the PPO. That's the one that costs us the mo- the most money. So I always add in an extra family plan there because it's the highest plan and if a family member, if a person comes in on a family plan, we know that we have the funding there. Same thing with the opt-out. I always give us like a little bit of leeway in it to make sure that we have enough funding for the year.
Smart, okay, I appreciate that.
Mr. Constance?
Um, so far I'm pretty good with the, the health and, uh, dental. I, you said you, the, the, the current, it's going out to, would you say seventeen different possible suppliers?
So there's, there's seven that we're looking at. It's the GIC.
Seventeen.
No, it's GIC, MEA, Mayflower, um, Mash Strategic, Southeastern and there is one more that I can't think of off the top of my head. Um, GIC, if we were to go with them, there's no requirement to put into the trust. You just are accepted in and you, you know, pay the rates that they're given. Um, some of the other ones do come with a trust. I've spoken to one group that the buy-in is seven hundred thousand dollars that the town is allowed to pay over four years.
Who's that?
So that is Mayflower. Um, they give the, the most amount of options, but they're, I, I fully understand what they're saying. You know, you don't just come into a group and you're automatically starting to take your claims out of a trust that they've built. So this is your way of essentially paying for your claims, um, which is the buy-in. So a few of them do have a buy-in. I'm right now just waiting to see what the, what the IAC, you know, the people come back with. Is it, what's most important to the employees here? Is it the price of the plan? Is it the plan itself? Uh, what are they looking for? Cause then we can kind of narrow it down to maybe a top three and figure out which one works the best for us.
You, I know you said MEA, so you go working with MMA and then I'm assuming.
So MEA is another one that, um, I've given them.
I call it by.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Um, they're another one that, yes, they have the information on. They, over the last few years though, they've had significant increases. They're, they're usually around like ten to thirteen percent every year. So I'm kind of hesitant on that one. Mash Strategic offers a very unique plan where the total of the employees falls under an umbrella. So if you have ten thousand employees, you get a bigger discount because you have a higher number. The, um, the difference between them though is that you pay for your own claims. So if Lakeville has a great year, we are paying like very minimal for our claims that year. However, if we have one year when we have significant, uh, health issues, we're paying for it. So it's not.
To self-insure.
Yeah, so it's not like the trust where everybody kind of puts in the money and everybody takes out the money. This one, you put in the money and you pay your claims. So they all have like a little bit of a uniqueness to them. Uh, it just depends on what people want out of their health insurance plan.
I don't envy you. This sounds very painful.
I, I, yeah, when it comes to health, the, yeah, um.
Yeah.
I'm gonna trust you as the professional. When we get on to the next one, we're gonna talk.
What's the next one?
Workman's compensation, uh, property liability.
Oh, okay. So workman's comp, property liability, right now, uh, the quotes are out there, so I can't, that's kind of like my guess on the number. Um, we have, I think I've sent the information now to two separate companies to give back, um, prices on.
What'd you send them out to?
What's the guy's name, Jeff?
I forget his name. I forget the, uh, let me just tell it up.
This is all, it's just, it's all, this part here has always been the contention. It's all, it's never got sent out in time. It's, and, and I'll, full disclosure.
Yep.
I have a direct relationship with MIA. Uh, what I do is property liability. Um, adjuster. I handle a large portion of their claims for the public. So I'm very familiar with them. And the last time I went out to bid, I put everybody in touch with each other and somehow it got dropped until twenty days before and they couldn't do it. So I, and there was just, there was another, nothing to do with you, different person. Um, what do they say, different circuits, different monkeys. Um, but, um, so I just, I'm, 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 I, every year this goes up and up and up and no one ever seems to put it out to bid. And that's why I was really, I've been beating this drum since the day I go out here because I keep seeing these prices get so much higher. And our cost per claim, I mean, I mean, our, our loss ratio seems to be low because we never file claims. That's my next, was one of my other questions, you know, we have people crashing into walls and stuff like that. Nobody files insurance yet. We've got trees falling on buildings, we don't put an insurance company. You know, especially when you're in a trust program, it doesn't really affect your premiums, you know, because it, it, it's shared across the entire group. And if you don't, you know, worst case scenario, if you get too high, they just raise your deductible versus your premium. So that was my only issue.
Yeah, so in the, the workman's comp and the property insurance, it's not just like the town. So it's, we have separate plans, so we have V-FIS for our police and our fire and then we have Mega for our town. Um, so that is the combined number for the, the two different ones. V-FIS, I don't think we've ever tried to go outside of them. They're pretty much the state for, um, like emergency management personnel. And then I did see Maya, MEA, see, I don't even know what I'm calling it anymore. I think you confused me on that. Uh, you do have to be a member though of them in order to, I think, apply for their insurance is what I was.
You technically are, but MEA is an umbrella, is under the umbrella of MMA.
Okay, then yeah.
So you are, we are members of MMA, so you have the absolute probability to become, you use the MEA program. And I'm not saying they're cheaper, I don't know, if they're not cheaper, speaking from finance, you know, go, go with the cheapest rate. Also, we're gonna look at the services they get.
Yeah, well, lucky you now, I'm MCPBO, so I can put these things out to bid.
There you go, so put it out to bid and find out what's, you know, and, and again, I also, yes, I look at the dollars and cents because we're working on a tight budget, but also with the servicing, I brought this up before. As members of MMA, you know, EVOL training, they have, you know, MEA has a, a vehicle, they, uh, simulated, they bring down. I've been to them, fire stations, they do fire station training, they do, uh, you know, they base driving to the police departments right in a simulator. No more sending your staff halfway across the state to do EVOL training. So sometimes it's a good idea to, to look at some of the other services, not just the insurance part of it, is my point.
Thank you, Mr. Constance. I think the last time everything went out to bid was around twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, so it had been.
Been a while.
A while, yeah, so, um, competitive bids, lots of work. Um, so. Um, so I, I know that you are struggling through it because it's like mattress shopping. There's all different features and none of them match up from what you're trying to look across and it's.
If you need connections, there are names of people to reach out to, feel free to reach out to me.
Okay.
Give you contacts.
He knows, he knows a person.
I, I know a guy.
He knows a guy. Uh, anyone else have any questions, comments about the budget? Or any of the lines?
No, other than really do owe it to, to Lacy and team for saving us last year. And we're in a much better position this year because of it, so thank you. That was a Herculean effort that you undertook last year at the last minute.
Good times, I say, good times. Um, I don't have any other questions. Um, I just want to thank you for all the hard work you're doing and I know we're, we put a little bit more on you every year. Um, but I'd love to hear that you're getting more certifications and that Chris is getting certifications too. I think that's great. Um, I would love everyone to be more involved in, um, in what's going on in town. And I think there's some opportunities now as we move through some processes where, you know, we, we can use some of that expertise in other areas and, and expand, um, you know, some of the, the roles. It's called performance punishment. And when you do well, we give you more. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you.
So Capital has its own tab, page eighty-eight.
So, um, the town has always kind of had a capital improvement program, to my understanding. Um, I tried to spruce it up more this year and kind of get into an overview of what capital is, what the process is like in general, what it's like in Lakeville, kind of a timeline of really what we do throughout the year. Um, ideally, this process starts in July. Um, I started in October, Mike started in November, so like we felt like we were catching up the whole time. Still are, it feels like, on some of this stuff. Um, so next year, this is gonna start July, before this road even starts. Um, and then we, I tried to really get into how it's paid. Um, a lot of the financing can be complicated and this is kind of a rundown of what it looks like. Now, I think I said before, this is probably gonna grow to about a hundred pages. Um, I'd like to actually show you what the requests are. Uh, pictures and quotes and the whole she, the whole shebang. Um, you're probably gonna see more charts and graphs and trends and analysis on some of this stuff, but we just ran out of time, to be honest. Um, and so we have a five-year improvement program where it kind of shows um, what was requested in fiscal twenty-six, but also what is coming up in fiscal twenty, uh, fiscal two thousand and thirty. Um, and then the very last page, well, second to last page is the twenty-six um request and then how they're gonna get funded. And then the very last page is the ARPA, strictly capital. Um, and so what, which
I think we went into the appendix tab.
That's all we're gonna do, we're trying to get it.
Yeah.
They took my appendix.
So when you get to the very last page where it shows ARPA, um, we tried to really hammer what capital really is. It's not just what we allocate for free cash. Um, we want to show what, what, what everything is. So you'll see there's Green Communities, there is Chapter Ninety, there is uh retained earnings, free cash, uh, just everything. And so I want to give a full picture of what has really been expended. And so I thought it was important to include ARPA, cause ARPA really is an influx of capital into the local economy. Um, and so you can see a lot of stuff got done the last couple of years. Um, some of it's still ongoing, um, but it's good information nonetheless and it's, it's two point five million. We wouldn't have put into capital otherwise, um, which always helps. And so I'll go through the fiscal twenty-six capital improvement program by funding source. Um, we housed MS four engineering. Um, which is really, it's a, it's a federal, it's a federal and state requirement, how we handle stormwater reporting. Um, and that, that's seventy-five thousand out of free cash. That number is really for two years. Uh, we figured we'd kind of pre-fund it for the next year as well. Um, and then the town website is for thirty thousand. Um, since I've got on board even before when I was researching Lakeville, people just hammer home how bad the website is. Um, and so the select board has, even, even in this meeting, has said we need to get the message out. With what we have, it's tough to do that. Um, we were on a call, select board member Day and I, they said we have the worst type of Civic Plus that we can possibly have. Um, I think we have like five widgets and like I think the, the, really the next package up is thirty. Um, and so we have like really limited capabilities to get the message out. We have basically a bulletin board on the homepage and that's really it. Um, calendars aren't great, the minutes aren't, can't, it's just the presentation's awful. And so thirty thousand is probably a high estimate, but that would get us the Cadillac version of what we're looking for.
Um, this completely, I, I spaced out when we were looking at this and talking to Civic Plus, but police and library have independent webpages. I don't know if there's an opportunity for savings there. If, if that project would give them what they need as well, or if it's better to
That's why there is a little bit of a buffer. I think it was about eighteen to nineteen, but then there was a few add-ons I thought were important, like the ADA improvements. And then I think it listed off two or three thousand for each new website, so which would be like a sub-page, like a library, police.
Gotcha.
That's why the thirty is as high as it is.
All right, thank you.
Um.
That's helpful. I thought the library was attached strictly to sales.
It might be.
It might be. I know we can probably have a page that then connects to sales.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I, I, I think, and don't quote me, but I think it was the reason we didn't have them last time. And this was twenty thirteen, uh, when we did this, is because the library had to be hooked up to the sales network.
Okay. This number is a little rough. I think we took that call the last day before I put this on paper.
Uh-huh.
Um.
Is there a grant, there is a grant though that could possibly cover that, right, for technology and infrastructure?
It's possible, but that would come out next year.
Yeah.
Um, so that's what we had for the select board. Um, the building we're in now, they wanna, they, they need a roof replacement. It's been, I think, twenty-five years since this building's been, um, completed. Um, so two fifty's a really good estimate actually for what this roof is, huge roof. Um, and the estimate came from a top-level premium company.
Very good estimate because back in twenty sixteen, we got uh the same estimate for the police station roof. The old police station roof.
Geez.
Then again, it had multiple roof levels and uh structural issues, but yes.
Yeah, I was shocked we got that number. Um, it was confirmed, so that's, it's a good estimate. Um, the controls for the heat system replacement is forty thousand. Um, well, I guess the, the theme of this is we're trying to get more into capital stabilization to get away from the free cash. Um, that's really just because of the strain free cash is happening on the operating side. Um, and then as we discussed with Paul Nee, facilities manager, the fifty thousand um operating uh capital, that'll be, come out of free cash. Um, the police, as uh Chief Perkins mentioned, that'd be a vehicle replacement, a hundred and twenty-eight thousand. Then the irrigation well, um, for the police station as well. Um, that would save, I think he said five to ten thousand a year in uh water costs.
Um, just wanted to mention again on the vehicle replacement, uh, the chief confirmed he's doing it around every five years as opposed to some municipalities going down to like three years or
That's a two vehicles, if I recall. He said two vehicles.
Two.
Two, two and two.
Um, the town entered into a lease to purchase for a ladder truck a number of years ago. I think this might be the third or fourth year.
Yeah, I have lots of questions on this one. So I've never seen a lease on a capital plan because a capital plan would have to be voted on. I don't think you could just vote on not funding a lease. So it makes it kind of questionable to me that it exists on a capital plan when it really is it was at ten years, it's, it's an operating expenditure at that point in my mind. Could I get a little bit of enlightenment on?
I audited for four years and have been in this side of things for about thirteen and it's the first lease I've seen on a capital plan myself, to be honest with you.
Yeah, and I think it was a normal
No, not to get too far down the rabbit hole, but is it, you know, defined as a capital lease, which I think it is, which is, as you can see in parentheses, a lease to buy, which means we depreciate the asset we, we included as our depreciation schedules with the auditors. So I guess that's a little bit of a loophole there.
Yeah, but you know, how do you, how do you vote something that's
No, I hear lease screams operating to me.
Yeah.
But um, I, I don't know what the, you know, decision was at that time, so.
I don't know either. I, I assume there was probably no appetite to borrow, I guess.
I would assume so, yeah. Obviously I wasn't here, um, but yeah, kind of keep it, uh, keep the borrowing cost down.
Just seems like a punt.
What's that?
It seems like a punt.
Yes, definitely, uh, definitely was a head scratcher when I first got on board. Uh, you know, I just never seen it. It's not illegal, it's not unallowed.
No, 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 I'm just, it's just
It's a, it's a funny one.
Why, I mean, why trucks are expensive. Was it like two, I think they, I think Chief O'Brien had said like it's two point five or something to that degree. That's why maybe
One point two?
Say one point two is in my head.
I thought it was one point seven, but it's
Could be one point seven. It might have been one point two years ago.
One point two.
Do we know how far off that goes? Cause it's, I mean, it's on the five-year plan the whole way across, but
It's a ten-year lease.
Ten years, I think it's the third.
Yeah, I mean, uh, if we're going by how long the last one lasted, but you really can't with new technology cause of all the bells and whistles, it was like thirty years. How long?
What, what is it? So we did, I know we did this on a lease, which kind of took me a half a little bit when we first did this. Um, what, what is the buyout on the end of it? Is it, is it depreciation or is it just a flat buyout?
Um, I have to look into that and get back to you. I'm not, I'm not sure what the
Yeah, I, I think we did this because we really, I don't think there was an appetite to borrow or ask for a one point two million dollar, you know, vehicle at that time. And I don't remember how, because all I remember is seeing, here's the vehicle we're gonna lease. And I went, huh?
On the bright floor.
It was a
Up to?
Annual town meeting twenty twenty-two, one point four million lease dash purchase. And I don't know if this helps or not, Mike, but it says Mass General Lodge, Chapter Forty-four, Section Twenty-one C. If that's anything unique.
That is helpful.
So it was one point four that was approved at town meeting for a purchase, correct?
Lease dash purchase.
Lease slash purchase. I never understood it either, but I was, I was kind of new, that's why I didn't
I wasn't on any of the boards then, question for anyone on the finance committee. Was this the same fire truck that led, it was going to be um part of a
Agreement?
Agreement with the hospital, that's, the hospital was going to fund it. And then we got ourselves in maybe a chickens before they hatch situation?
Yep, that's the one.
Got it.
Yeah, I think with the option to buy, obviously, like I said, I think it can justify it being on the capital plan by that way. But yeah, it's uh, it's unique. But I think it budget constraints on borrowing too.
Okay. I don't think we need anyone to vote on it then at capital expenditures. We can just pass that through because they can't say no.
Right. Um, moving on to public works, um, typically in the past, the town has kind of supplemented the Chapter Ninety with a free cash article for roadway improvements. Um, I think they originally asked for three seventy-five. We put in a hundred thousand instead, um, just because of the budget being tight. Um, we put the Chapter Ninety allocation in here just kind of for awareness. Um, that number is about two hundred and forty grand higher than normal because of the Fair Share Act. Um, slightly increased this year. The Bud Permit is um related to, there's a, a big pile of old soil in the back of the DPW that's contaminated. And so uh, DEP has told us they need to have Cia removed. And so we pay a certain amount generally every year to just to basically take another bite out of it. Um, I think Frank has kind of said it might take like fifty years at the rate we're going. And so we, we, twenty-five's just a small number. We could put two million and not make a dent. That's how big the pile is. Um.
Need to make a quick comment there. Everybody hears me complain about that thing every year. Um, I mean, unless we turn it into a sledding hill, I mean, it's basically taking up town resources of the land under it. Where, you know, DPW could use as expansion or equipment storage or whatever, like I just wish we could find a way to fund this thing through some kind of grants or whatever to haul away more than a thimble a year.
Brownfields?
I don't know, anything.
It's possible.
I mean, the, the crazy thing is this came out of, you know, catch basins and they say, oh, you found asphalt. Yet it was a catch basin on the side of the road. Of course you're gonna find asphalt. So there's my yearly rant.
Brown asphalt.
Exactly.
Man, care, but, but good point. I've, I've recently become a little bit familiar with brownfields from the hospital discussion. So how can we have not pursued, isn't that a great use of brownfield, a municipality?
I'm sure there was a conversation at least once or twice. I just wasn't privy to it. And I was told this is the brownfields, but I, I do think there is an opportunity and we should look into it. Uh, because as Member Day says, it's just a drain. And, and seeing it just reach on into infinity past our, our lives is, is a depressing thought.
Right. Um, the next one is a sidewalk plow with equipment. Um, as Frank kind of mentioned, I think he said we got at least twenty to twenty-five complaints this year about sidewalks that weren't plowed. Um, especially Main Street, but also when you get into the subdivisions in town that are accepted, uh, that's where most of the complaints come from. And so, um, we put the request in for plow, cause we don't really have the real capability to do it right now. Um, the next one's a cabin chassis. Um, that's kind of, uh, I think Frank really valued engineered that one to get it down to two hundred thousand. I think it was originally three or four. Um, so we're getting a good piece of equipment for pretty cheap money. Um, also, as discussed, the transfer station, we're gonna use retained earnings on a number of uh small little projects. And that will spend down what we have for retained earnings. Um, Woon Pond Lodge will have some improvements. Um, that other column is from Green Communities, so that's where that will come out of. And then I put a placeholder for a new roof at their park office for fifteen thousand out of free cash.
Andrew, I'm having a, a blank. The, the sagging roof currently that looks in the building that looks like a glorified shed. That, that's what, that was there, the office building that they're talking about?
Yeah, it's on the right-hand side of, when you go down, yeah. Yep. So
That's, that's very un, yeah.
It's a little bit of a chicken and egg, like the building is not very
It looks like, it does. It looks like a shed. It looks like we could get a shed dropped there and do the same.
This is like the main one where the office was? It's a little bit bigger than that shed, right?
It'll look better than one though.
Yeah.
Uh, in many of, this is one of the kinds of projects where I always wonder like, could we reach out to Old Colony?
Well, yes.
Say, hey, is this a project that while in session, it's a small enough building, hey, let's do a roofing lesson and
Not only that, I think it would be good public relations for Old Colony to be seen in the parks as part of the community as well. Um, I know they do projects for other towns. They were in Fairhaven last year. Um, they
They did the lodge, the, one of the rooms in the lodge.
Did they really?
Yeah, they did a big part of a lodge.
I didn't remember that.
Yeah.
Um, but there are, that building might, yeah, it just does not look like it's gonna stand up to the weight of a new roof. So I just have concerns that that project's not gonna be that project. That project's gonna be fifteen plus fifteen plus fifteen, um, because of just the, you, you see it, the, the bow.
Yeah, it's possible. I mean, I, I'd have to see who the, who the quote came from, but it came from somebody in the area, so.
Cheaper just to get a trailer.
Yeah.
Or eighteen hundred square feet in the middle, boys.
Stop yourself.
Um, can we go back to the sidewalk plow for a moment?
Mm-hmm.
A, wow, I didn't realize it cost that much. B, that's, if you think about it, a whole new service DPW would be doing. So we also try to figure out like how many people hours we're gonna have to pay for to do that? And then when the normal plow comes right back and fills the sidewalk back in, like, what's that gonna cost?
I think the DPW director said they were doing it by hand now, so I think this is actually time deducted.
I've never seen them besides town facilities.
Uh, Main Street?
When? I've never seen him out there. I'm not saying that negatively.
Was that what he's implying?
I think, I think he says he has a couple guys do Main Street and it takes like a couple days.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't know if they do it like all day, every day.
Drive ATV down that sucker and take out some
It seems a pretty sporadic, it's on snowfall and whether or not Main Street gets better.
That's, I think depending on who we, what the manpower we has, he might just not even do it sometimes.
Can we build the state back for that?
I wish.
Yeah, I'm just afraid we buy this for, you know, two hundred and then we have to put forty-five thousand a year of people to actually drive this thing around town and like, what are we getting ourselves into?
I think Frank's fear was that he was getting enough complaints that it was getting stressful to handle all the complaints and get the, get these sidewalks done. So he's like, this is how we get it done. So.
Were these all public ways?
As far as I know, they're all public ways, yeah.
Yes.
Just expecting the complaints to be coming from private.
That's, it's one thing when you, when you accept a public, a new road as a public way, handling, everything that goes along with that can be costly. People don't quite think of that.
Don't all the big cities like Boston have an ordinance that property owners are required to keep the sidewalk in front of their property clear?
In front of your property.
Do we?
We do not have that ordinance.
Obviously, we don't have that.
Ordinance is easier to pass than spending two hundred K. I'm just saying.
We're giving out Larry's phone number out of the meeting.
I'm just saying, it's a lot of money. We're trying to cut, you know, triple budget here.
Yeah, I don't, I don't disagree.
Dropping two hundred K is a lot of money right now. I'm not saying it's not a bad idea because I hate seeing when my father-in-law's outside shovel on his sidewalk because his city makes them do it, but.
But I think it's, I think, and he didn't say it, but I'm just gonna throw it out there. We do still have the rule that if you live a mile from the school, correct, that, that some of these kids are walking in the day. So I think those, that section gets plowed because there could be walkers.
I'm just trying to tell you, you know, to high school, I'm on Freetown Street, there's no sidewalk.
There's no sidewalks. There's no lights either.
We get used to that. But I'm saying in all the directions, what sidewalks? You know, in front of the school, yeah, but after that, they disappear.
Yeah, no.
So I'm not sure how much sidewalk we have that two hundred thousand dollars is the right investment. And trust me, you know Frank wants to do a good job and he does a great job. I'm just saying two hundred thousand is for the minimal, I don't know how much sidewalk we have. How, you know, is there, is there something we can do that's better than that is my only question.
He did express that, that if you guys didn't like it, you could take it right off. It was just really his.
I can hear it. I can hear his voice saying those words and it doesn't mean what you think it means.
It's really a solution because we get a lot of complaints and like to solve those complaints is resources that we just don't have.
Which is beyond that number.
What would our capital stabilization be back at if, what would the balance be if we actually got all this approved?
One point nine, I believe.
It's still up there.
Yeah, I have a presentation.
So this is, it's up to date, it's March thirty-first with interest. So if this were to pass right now, we would be down to, the balance right now is two million eight ninety-eight seven one seven. This would bring it down to two million five thousand seven one seven.
I'm sorry, two point five roughly?
Two million five thousand, so a little over two.
Madam Chair, may I ask another question? Refresh my memory. So money allocated to capital stabilization is requires.
Two thirds.
Right, town meeting vote. To pull money back out would require.
Two thirds.
So, okay, thank you.
That's why we separate them out of the town meeting articles.
From the, right, that's it. Thank you.
Any questions from anyone?
No, other than, you know, next year, as I learned from meeting with Mike and Andrew. I mean, we, we don't expect a lot of free cash, a lot of budget turnbacks. I am scared what our capital plan could really look like next year.
We'd have to rely on capital stabilization for the most part.
That means the wall is approaching quickly if we're relying on that.
I mean, we know we need a hundred and seventy-five thousand at least. Yeah, outside of that, so.
It's partly why we put more money this year because it's gonna be slim pickings going forward.
Yeah, you know, twenty-seven right now is at two point oh seven million. Obviously, it's way early, but.
I mean, we do have some unexpected revenue sources that are close to free cash. We had the four hundred and twenty-four thousand excess E and D. And, you know, the EMS receipts that were spoken about last Wednesday are gonna be close to free cash in fiscal twenty-five. So, and, and, you know, we are gonna be a little higher there than estimated. So it could be like an anomaly this year when we certify free cash because of that excess E and D. Kind of given us that four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar boost, but yeah, it's, there's not gonna be a lot of turnbacks and not a lot of wiggle room with revenue or expense. So definitely a concern.
We will have some money from those property auctions. Some towns have done that, but it's not.
Such a bad practice to use one-time funds to shore up the budget.
I'm not saying it's necessarily for the budget, those property sales, but just to put money in free cash or something, so.
If we continue to go up and up and have to fund at higher rates all over, it will end up eventually going right to fund the operating budget.
Yeah, and you know, motor vehicle is another big one. That's to be determined in fiscal twenty-five because as we all know that we just got our excise tax a month ago. So we, we haven't seen what that's gonna do to our ledger and where that's gonna land, but we're hoping that comes in higher than estimated, so.
I had a question about the MS four engineering. I think you said it was like pre-funded for this year for seventy-five, so it's paying for two years. Is that right? But then on the five-year capital, it's aligned at about there for seventy-five each year out?
Yeah, so I mean, we can, it's one of those things we could, it's kind of like the MS four, we could kind of fund it a lot more than what we do. But he did express to me that we could take seventy-five, do it for two years.
Any other questions? Andrew, quick question for you. I don't know, I think I mentioned it last time. If you're able to look into the green communities for any of the heating and roof needs for the library. Just in their green community, there was some, there was some stuff about roofing last year.
Yeah, well, we haven't completed ours yet. We're gonna do it this spring. And so I think the application period was just up. So there's a possibility in the fall when it reopens, we can apply again, but we need an audit basically saying that we can do it on the roof. Difficult.
Just reminded me of another question, also for the library roof. If we don't know, that's fine, but do you happen then off the top of your head, was that quote for twenty-year, a thirty-year asphalt, a forty-year? I mean, can we get one that's gonna outlast us?
I think it was a thirty-year, but I can double check.
This one was thirty, right?
That's what I'm asking, like if it's.
Was it twenty-five years in?
I mean, a lot of the, a lot of the ones in the homes, right, you see they're advertised now as like fifty-year shingles, lifetime shingles.
They have lifetime shingles. I don't know.
Like, what would that cost? Or would the roof outlast the usefulness of the building?
The building, that's, that's, when you talk about municipality, it might be a little different kind of life expectancy. But they do make lifetime.
I think that's it. I think we've gone through. Anything for anyone?
All I wanna say is that a great job with the budget and the department heads, all the great jobs, because they knew we were in so much trouble this year cutting the budget. They're cutting their budgets. I'd just like to say, it doesn't have to be a bad fiscal time to cut budgets. It can be a good time. It's obviously possible. So it was a great job. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, would you like to schedule like a recap meeting?
Yes, I think it's important to kind of touch on the high points and then get maybe a little bit deeper conversation on some of the things that maybe we want to individually talk about where we disagree with the funding or, or any of those things and just bring to light the direction that the select board is thinking for town meeting, prior to town meeting. No one should have to guess what we're, what we're thinking. So being able to have a recap would be really important.
Mike and I are putting together some stuff that'll kind of outline what's really been asked, I think, throughout. But if there's anything else you'd like to see at that meeting, just feel free to let us know.
Yeah, I think it's also important if we can get, you know, even one slide on all the things that we've done with the money that we had this year. Whether it be budget money, whether it be ARPA funds, whether it be grants, or whether it just be, you know, us working with our, with our own two hands to get some stuff done. We have some amazing department heads that do great work that I really wanna just let people know how very carefully we're spending their money.
I don't know if there's a way to visualize this or not. Well, if there is, I'm sure these guys can figure it out, but like, I feel like we were already relying on free cash. It's like we're already robbing Peter to pay Paul just to survive this year. And like, what does that mean next year? I know we're doing, I'll say the best that we can unless something new turns out or state or federal funding comes back, but, you know, it's, it's bleak, right? And I appreciate all the cuts and stuff that you guys have done, but how, how do we survive a couple more years without, you know, having the override discussion? Or do we just have to have the discussion and let the people decide what they want and what they don't want?
Well, if you guys have been following the news, it's in so many towns right now. There's the discussion everywhere. It seems like every ten years it's gonna come up for almost every town unless they're funding outside of, you know, unless they have a lot of revenue streams or a lot of business, which we don't have either of those, which makes it all the more difficult. It insulated us during COVID times, but it's bad, you know, for the rest of the time that we just don't have additional revenue and funding sources. So without those, I, I really can't see where the school continues to increase. Then we have all of the other expenses that go up way more than two and a half percent every year. You know, for the last ten years, we're looking at a net eighteen percent increase in just like operating costs. And instead of us absorbing that, we've been cutting and cutting and cutting and cutting year over year, level services, level thing. And the school has as well. So we are getting to a point where we're gonna have to have some hard discussions and see where the people of Lakeville, you know, where they wanna be, you know, how they want us to fund.
We essentially gave the school, Free Lake specifically, we gave them essentially our entire levy increase. And then everything else is like, you know, a dance. I mean, you know, as Lacy was sharing, just the insurance costs alone are going up probably two hundred and five thousand dollars. Like, well, we already gave away our levy, so unless there is something else coming from receipts or new growth, where else is it gonna be?
Great point, yeah. You're kind of, you're giving the one guarantee. And then you're wishing and hoping that all the estimated receipts come, come true to fund everything else.
And that one guarantee was nine hundred thousand less than they wanted, so.
Yes, because they're gonna have to incur cuts on their side with this. This is austerity to them. You know, if, if someone stands up at town meeting and goes for the, for the full funding, we're gonna be in a very bad position for the town where we have to cut essential services until we can figure our way around it. So we need to be as proactive as possible and sound the alarm bells because there, there is no, oh, well, you know, we'll squeak by this year and next year we'll be better. I don't see next year being better. I see next year being a worse version of this year. And then, you know, a couple of years from now, recovering, but never, we're, we're never going backwards. That's not how it works. And we haven't kept up with inflation, not even a quarter of the inflation. So the mismatch between the two things is gonna come to a head at some point. I'm available for parties and, you know, paying people happy. But yeah, I really appreciate all the dedication, especially this group, of having to, you know, maybe not deliver the most happy news to people, but trying to keep an eye on how we keep everything afloat and keep our town and our schools running.
And yeah, just give me the questions if you have them. Hate to have that recap and then there's a question that we could get answered for you before what we have to do in the moment.
Madam Chair, can we try to schedule a meeting now?
Sure. Actually, I'll take the motion. Do we wanna do it or, I mean, it's not an official vote?
No, it just would help to have it.
Tuesday though, or Monday?
Are you talking next week or?
What did you? Yeah, what, Andrew, what was the date you gave? I'm sorry.
I think the only date I can't do is the twenty-third. That's the Fire Station Building Committee.
So the twenty-first, the twenty-second?
I know the FinCom is leaning towards the twenty-first.
I must have overlooked my count.
Did we have that discussion?
He asked me a question.
Double check.
That's my last thing now.
Twenty-first or twenty-second?
Twenty-second.
Does that work for you? Twenty-second works for us.
Twenty-second it is.
I'm just not sure what it'll be, but I can check on the room.
Very good. I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the select board meeting at seven thirty-two PM.
We are dissolved.